Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, June 13, 2022. I will call the meeting to order. Would the secretary please read in the notice?
Yes, I will. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on Monday, June 13, 2022, at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Christopher and Lauren Sizer, application for variance to reduce side and rear yard setbacks from five feet to two feet for location of detached garage located at 30 Waterville Road, R80 Zone. Raymond Tribuzio, application for special exception for expansion of a nonconforming residential building in an industrial zone located at 27 Railroad Avenue, C1 Zone. Darrell W. Hall, application for variance to reduce front yard setback from 20 feet to 13 feet for an attached garage located at 10 Walnut Street, R9 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at www.farmington CT dot org backslash about hyphen Farmington backslash calendar hyphen meetings. A copy of this proposal is available online at www.farmington CT dot org backslash backslash government backslash zoning hyphen board hyphen of hyphen appeals, or by calling the planning development at Farmington Town Hall, planning department, rather, at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, May 25, 2022.
Okay, and I'm looking at the sidebar, if you will, on the Zoom meeting, and I see that as regular members, we have myself, John Schoenhorn, Ron Llewellyn's there, Sarah Nadine. Who else?
We
Regular members.
Chairman Callahan, so you're present. Ron Llewellyn is present. Sarah Nadine is present. John Schoenhorn's present. Stephen Walsh is present.
Steve's here.
Christopher Cloud emailed us, said he wouldn't be able to make the meeting. John Healy is present.
I just saw Chris's email a couple minutes ago.
Yep, I don't see Harry Marsh and Bob Weiner emailed and said he wouldn't be able to make it.
But we have five regular members.
You have six. Well, five regular members and an alternate.
Do we need the alternate appointed?
Yeah, I would recommend it.
Okay, let's. Who's the alternate? Who's yours?
John Healy.
Oh, John. Hey, John. So I'll appoint John Healy to serve as alternate on all three of the applications that are being addressed at this evening's meeting. All right, if we may turn then to the first item on the agenda, 30 Waterville Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Lauren Sizer. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Garrett, I know I sent you those slides for our presentation. Are we going to start there? Or are we looking through these documents first?
There you go.
Thank you. We recently purchased this home at 30 Waterville Road. I'm sure if you're a local Farmington resident, you might know it. We're right on the Country Club property on the 17th hole. The house was recently renovated by the prior owners, and they added a sun porch, they added a front porch, and we are just looking to replace the existing shed with a garage, a larger garage. Garrett, can we go to the next slide so we can just look at the property overview? So this slide here shows you the outline of our property, shows you the meets and bounds. We have an easement on this property for driveway access, so you can see that on the left side of the slide, you can see the driveway there, and it goes all the way to the top right-hand corner where you see an outline of a shed. And the red box there that we've highlighted in the second photo to the right is where we would like to construct our garage, because a lot of that area has already been flattened out for the existing shed. But in doing our due diligence to get the survey work done in order to document the proposed shed on the property plot plan, we noticed that the shed was encroaching on the Country Club's land. So in this view, we are keeping the garage within our property lines, but trying to keep it in as much of a similar place as possible to where the shed lies, which lines up with the driveway, and will reduce the number of trees that will need to be cut down for the construction. So if there aren't any questions yet, we can go to the next slide. This is a photo of the existing shed. It was built in the early 1900s. You can't really fit a car much in there other than some of your your, right, lawn equipment. There is actually, if you look to the right, a tree stump growing through it. There are a few holes in the ceiling. And when we originally purchased this property, you know, we love the town of Farmington. The house is gorgeous. It's on a, it's a historical home built from 18, built in 1827. So we love the history of it. It's a nonconforming lot. It's in an R80, but it's about one-third of an acre. And you can see that the shed just hasn't weathered too well, and with the amount of trees in this property, and of course, with the Country Club next door, we were looking to definitely construct a garage from when we originally purchased it. So as you can see, the shed does not provide ample space to currently park a car. And the Country Club was very excited when we discussed this with them early on, and even at, within the past few weeks. We will both benefit aesthetically from the removal of this structure and the reconstruction of something nicer and more consistent with the exterior of the house. So Garrett, can we go to the next slide, please? The unique hardship that we have in this property, we zoomed out a little bit in this picture. You can see the cart path to the left. So this, our house is right on the boundary between the 17th hole. And if you look to the right of that shed, we would have to take down more trees to put the garage in the place that's currently allowed with the existing setbacks. And obviously, both our family and the Country Club enjoy the privacy of that nice tree line wall. So there is that unique hardship, as well as the golf balls that enter the property on a pretty regular basis. So we are very, very intent on adding the garage and would love to keep it in a similar of a location to that shed to not alter the rest of the environment of the backyard. So you can go to the next slide, Garrett. These are some pictures of our neighbors on Waterville Road. This is B. Stockwell's house on 26 Waterville Road and Tricia Morelli on 22. They're both within our 200-foot radius, and as you can see, both of these houses have a very similar exterior and a detached garage. We are actually the only house, the only residential dwelling between the intersection of Route 10 and Farming, and Route 4, that does not have a detached garage. So we would maintain the consistency of the character of the neighborhood by adding this. You can go to the next slide here. And that is a picture of the outside of our home and roughly what our garage will look like. It will be a two-car garage with a white exterior, and can't really see the front door in that picture, but it's a nice wood front door. So we would be adding garage doors to match that, and we really couldn't get the windows on this preliminary design, but that's how it's intended to look. And we can go to the end. Oh, I think these are just pictures that the zoning committee provided for.
You know, did you provide photos, Lauren?
What was that?
I don't think you provided photos, did you?
No, just the ones that were in the PowerPoint slides.
Yeah, okay.
And then at the end, we do have email confirmation from the Country Club's manager, who presented our plans to the board, and there was no opposition from the Country Club.
Do any of the members of the commission have questions for the applicant? I'll start with Ron Llewellyn. Ron?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking, there's two proposals for the garage. Is that correct? One in red, one in black?
Yep.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yep, the red one is showing the variance. So that would be keeping it more in that area that we're intending to put it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And it's 24 by 24, in case I didn't mention that.
You all set, Ron? If so, Sarah Nadine, any questions to the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Steve, how about you?
No questions, thank you.
John Healy?
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask, would membership at the club be considered grounds for recusal on this, or am I good?
I don't think so. I, if there was opposition from the club, that might be an issue, but given that the club has expressed agreement with the application, I don't think it's a conflict.
Thank you. No questions.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Just a couple. It's my understanding that the current shed is partially off your property, so that has to come down or removed anyway, correct?
Correct. We are removing it. Yep.
Okay, and the, are you in the historic district? In other words, do you also have to submit anything to the?
We are not.
You're not? Okay. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, and my questions would be, what's, what's the difference, not necessarily to an inch, but of the size of the footprint of the proposed garage? It's 24 by 24. What was the size of the structure that's being removed?
It's 20, I know it's 20 feet long. The width is probably about 10.
I think it's about 200.
Yeah.
Okay, so the new, the new structure, it's not gigantic, but it's significantly larger than the existing shed.
Yeah, it's about double.
And it would be a two-car garage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, those are all the questions I have. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application, other than the applicant?
Hi, my name's Angela Munson. I live across the street from the Sizers at 33 Waterville Road. As you may know, the golf course goes on both sides of Waterville Road. So we are neighbors to the golf course, if you will, as well. I don't know how they've survived without a, without a garage up to now, living there for a year. We collect about an entire Rubbermaid tub full of golf balls each week at our house. There have been times that it has struck many things on our property, not the least of which are cars, our golf cart, our animals. And so I think that the hardship that they experience as a result of not having a garage, it could not be understated for those who don't live on the golf course. We don't have, you know, Tiger Woods out here playing on the golf course. We have folks that are out there and enjoying themselves, and as a result, it makes for interesting time spent in the yard. She made a very valid point, which is everyone else between here and the, and the red light have garages to put their cars in, but the Sizers. So it wouldn't be out of character for the neighborhood. Also, what they've proposed is not a variance by size. It's only a variance by placement. So they are within the requirements that the town requires for the size of a garage. So even though it's bigger, it's not a variance in size. It's a variance by about two or three feet. And I can tell you also, as a neighbor to the golf course, that having that tree line is very helpful in deterring golf balls coming in to the yard as well. So even though she highlighted that it's privacy, it also helps with making sure no one gets hurt and no damage is done to property, having those trees. They're also very mature trees that add to the landscape for the rest of the neighborhood. So from that perspective, as the neighbor, I'd like to see those trees stay and not have to come down just to fit within these artificial parameters that have been placed for them getting a garage. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Anything further from members of the commission based on those comments? Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant?
Raise your virtual hand.
Yes, raise your hand on Zoom. I don't see the, feature's got to be there somewhere.
I don't see it.
It's up on the top. If there's no one else that wishes to speak in favor of the applicant, is there anyone wishes, who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, hearing no objection to the application, and having heard from the applicant and one supporter, I believe that closes the public portion of the hearing with regard to the application on 30 Waterville Road. Let's, and I'm trying to recall, and I'll appreciate any comments from the other commissioners. I believe in our most recent history, we have been addressing matters individually before moving on to other matters. Is that consistent with your recollection?
Yes.
Okay, let's, then let's do, I'll try and stay in the same order that I started at in when we asked the question. Are there any comments from members of the commission, the public hearing having been closed? I'll start with Ron Llewellyn.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we need a motion first before we discuss it, right?
Good point. You always catch me when I make procedural missteps, John. May we have a motion regarding the application for the variance at 30 Waterville?
I'll make a motion to approve Christopher and Lauren Sizer's application for variance to reduce side and rear yard setbacks from five feet to two, three, to two feet for a location of detached garage located at 30 Waterville Road, R80 Zone.
May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Llewellyn, any comments?
I think the plan fits the neighborhood, and I think, you know, they're working with their neighbors. The golf course is in favor of it. I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Sarah Nadine, any comments?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
How about Steve Walsh?
No comments.
John Healy?
No comment.
John Schoenhorn?
Yeah, I believe that the applicant has shown a hardship that's unique because of the golf course, the fact that golf balls come flying into the property, as the neighbor stated, and therefore, the need to have the tree line remain in place is something that I consider unique to this parcel, and therefore, I agree that a hardship has been shown.
All right, and my comments are last, and I agree that there is a significant showing of hardship. And I personally will do my part for the safety of the neighborhood by never playing golf.
Appreciate that.
With that, we have a motion and a second. Garrett, will you call the roll for the vote, please? Or somebody, whoever's going to do it from the?
Yep, Chairman Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner Nadine?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Commissioner Healy?
Aye.
The motion passes, and the variance application is granted.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
No problem.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda, 27 Railroad Avenue, and I saw the applicant, I believe, earlier. Is it?
Yes.
Is it Mr. Tribuzio?
It is.
Yes.
All right, as to 27 Railroad Avenue in Unionville, may we hear from the applicant?
I can't hear.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, we concluded the first item on our agenda, Mr. Tribuzio, and your item is second.
Yes.
And I asked if we could please hear from you, the applicant, with regard to your variance application for the front porch at 27 Route Avenue.
Yes, it's just to put a front porch on Tom Tribuzio's house that really matches the front porch on the rest of the homes on the street. And I'm, I'm not sure, this is not a variance, correct? This, this is a?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the extension of a nonconforming use.
Correct. It's a special exception.
It just, really just to give the people a little bit more breathing space. It's a very small home. Just to build a front porch that matches the neighborhood.
Is there anything further that you wish to say to the commissioner Tribuzio?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't. It seems very muffled for some reason.
I, hmm.
Carrie just needs to speak directly in your microphone. For some reason, it mutely.
Pretty close to it. Okay, is that better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay, is it better if I'm closer? Okay. If you don't have anything further to add, Mr. Tribuzio, I'll go in the same order. Do any of the commissioners have questions? Commissioner Llewellyn?
I don't have a question, per se. I did go by the property today, and it's a very small property. I don't know that the pictures actually show you how small it really is.
Oh, I've been there many times. It's pretty tiny. I can appreciate that. Sarah Nadine?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Walsh?
No questions.
Commissioner Healy can't hear.
No questions.
And Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Yeah, I sent in a few pictures. I just wanted to show the one, that, that one that shows the street. These are the houses to the left of your house that all show that they have front porches, correct?
Yes.
In fact, if I see three pictures, we don't see your house, but yours would be where the, next to the beige house, but I'm saying if you look at this picture, it's past, it's where that white car is that's being circled with the?
That is correct.
Okay, so every other house except yours, at least to the left of your house, has the kind of front porch that we're talking about, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And is yours going to be any further to the street than those porches?
No, no, it isn't. I measured very carefully to make sure that it wouldn't be.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
And I don't have any questions for the applicant. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Raise your hand on Zoom, please, if you are here. Hearing no further comment in favor of the applicant, is there any one who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. Hearing no opposition to the application, the public portion of the hearing is closed. If we may have comments from the commissioners in the same order. Commissioner Llewellyn? Any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Nadine?
No comments.
Commissioner Walsh?
No comments.
Commissioner Healy?
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
No other comment.
And my comment is, I think it's, it is a very small property with a very small lot, but it is, it seems that the applicant wants to do basically what everybody else on the street has had to do, and just as obviously, and I've been by there many times. It is a very small property. I don't know how many square feet there are in the house, but it's got to be well under 1,000. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to have a motion on this application?
Yes. May we have a motion with regard to the application for a period, for a expansion of a nonconforming use at 27 Railroad Avenue in Unionville?
I'll make that motion, and specifically to approve the special exception for expansion in a industrial zone, C1 Zone at 27 Railroad Avenue, for a porch.
May we have a second, please?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is there any further comment from the members of the commission? Hearing no further comment, may we have the roll called for a vote, please?
Chairman Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner Nadine?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Commissioner Healy?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous in favor of the application. The application is granted. Thank you, Mr. Tribuzio.
Thank you.
Okay, the third item on the agenda is 10 Walnut Street. Oh, okay, now I remember which one this was. Is the applicant present?
This is Darren Hall, the applicant. I'm present.
Okay, Mr. Hall, may we, may we hear from you in support of your application for a variance?
I hope so, yes. I submitted it primarily, we wanted a property that was commensurate with other properties around, in fact, on 10 Walnut, that we are, in fact, on Walnut Street, I believe, we're the only property without an attached garage. That also includes Sarah Drive, whereas many beautiful homes all have a two-car attached garage. And when we initially brought this, or bought this property nine years ago, we've essentially updated every portion conceivable, from insulation to flooring, to heating system, to roof, to, we've essentially, it occupies the same space, however, everything has been replaced. And this is the final portion of what we would like on the same property. And primarily, we're asking for the exception for seven feet forward of the 20-feet setback. It's evidenced in this drawing. Primarily, oh, the rear of the property remains open. It's a small lot with, is it 86 feet from the property line to the rear of the property? Now, the unique part of this property is that the front of the residence is actually on the property line. If it had been set back further, of course, we could have had the same prop, or we could have had the garage set farther back. But the neighbors, and, and looking at 10 Walnut Street to our left, the two neighbors up from us have a view directly over our backyard down to the Farmington River in this piece of property. And in, in speaking, and I've, I've become familiar with, and I have a good relationship with all of our neighbors, all of them are just wonderful people. And in discussing that, I had to take into consideration all of them in order to put this prop, or put this garage where we would like it to be. We have two points of contact, a mudroom that would be directly attached at the forwardmost point of the garage, or for a rear walkway that would lead into the property. But once that we get this approved, if we get this approved, then we can go forward with that additional planning. So I, I just, it's, it's more difficult to see from just this one particular picture, but I also did submit others, and even the satellite imagery shows the shape and size of the property, and that is, that fence is on the 20-foot setback. The front window that is right forward of it would be an entryway into the living room, and to the rear of that are bedrooms. So this is also one of our hardships that we want it to be attached to a viable point at the house. So that's primarily the fact that we, we'd also like a garage, and also to be similar to all the other properties on our street, which include two brand-new builds across from. which include two brand-new builds across from us on additional properties that are large, beautiful homes. We just want to make something that's similar to what it is.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? I'll go in the same order as previously, Commissioner Llewellyn.
No questions.
Commissioner Nadine?
No questions.
Commissioner Walsh?
No questions.
Commissioner Healy?
No questions.
And for myself, what's the, I'm sorry, I skipped Commissioner Schoenhorn, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I have a few questions. The first is, the diagrams that you've submitted do not show an actual attachment or potential place of attachment between your house and this garage. So, looking at the side of your house as we see in this image, where would you propose to have a mudroom go between your house and this new garage?
Even a mudroom may be an overstatement, a connecting stairway, but an enclosed, of course.
Like a breezeway type connection?
Yes, yes. That cone marks the seven-foot mark forward of the, of the 20-foot setback. And the window that's directly to the right of the cone, yes, thank you for pointing that out. That would be, we would open that up and make that doorway and an additional doorway in the, in the two-car garage. We also, it is a historical property, and after, if, again, if it gets approved, that we have to then have a certificate of, I believe, appropriateness for the garage adjacent to it as well. And we're prepared, I was waiting, of course, for today to see if I'm going to be going forward with that additional application.
All right, so could we, can I see a couple of pictures from the street view of the driveway, please?
Yes.
Is the, so, is the garage width going to be wider than the current driveway? So, for example, is the locust tree that we see to the right there, the first tree, going to be removed? And are any other trees, including I saw a couple of pictures of a Japanese maple to the right of that, are they going to be removed for purposes of this garage?
Absolutely not, we intend to retain them all. In fact, where the cones are marking are the forward 20-foot marks for the, for the garage. Those 20-foot, and we've placed it exactly at a place that will fall between the home and to the right, the trees, where in fact, from Farmington Avenue, you will not be able to see the garage because of the tree and the other adjacent property on Farmington Avenue.
Well, that was my question, you have a neighbor to the right there, and at least the Japanese maple will remain there to sort of shade, if not block, some of the view, correct?
Absolutely, and it's a beautiful tree that it's now been prospering over the years, and we absolutely love the front of the property, so.
Right, and your house is a, is a one-story house, right?
That is correct, with a crawl space and a very small attic. And so primarily, we would love some additional storage.
Well, that was my next question. This is a two-story garage that you want to build, correct? Which will tower over your current house, correct?
From, well, you're not able to see the apex of the roof on the property from that view, but but it's within a foot or so of the top of our, the peak of our roof. It's a very small amount.
Right, because I noticed this, this proposal, this drafting drawing that we now see, there is a, as I see in the middle, there are joists, there is a level so that this could be considered a second story. You could put in flooring, it could be, I don't know, an addition to your house, it could be an extra apartment if you put in plumbing. Am I correct about that?
Which is not our intent at all. Primarily, we have storage spread across so many places that we want just one place to put it all, and just make it convenient for us, and to clear out clutter. And also, you know, New England winters are murderous on your vehicles, and we've now had them, you know, outdoors for several years, and we're dying to pull them inside.
Well, I understand about the garage, I'm, my questions have to do with the fact that this is a two-story garage as opposed to a one-story. Have you considered putting a one-story two-car garage there as opposed to a two-story?
We had initially, just for the cars, but primarily with that small area of loft upstairs, we just want the storage, we will not be plumbing it. Of course, we will be running electricity for garage door and lights and such. But for the amount of storage that we had wanted, it's, this is what we came up as a solution to everything.
All right, so based on what you said, would you object then if we were, if we were to grant this variance to limit so that there'd be no plumbing installed in this building?
Oh, that would be fine. We don't, we have no intent of putting plumbing in, yes.
Anything further, John?
No, that's it, thank you.
And my only question was, and this may be a question of town staff, more in the advocate, there's no variance needed for the height of the bill of the proposed structure, correct?
Hard setback, how you think compliance with zoning regulations?
And what's, and Mr. Hall, what is the total? What's the peak, 20 feet?
Um, here, let me see if I can...
I think I saw it on the drawing.
I believe it's, yes, I believe it is.
20 feet, three-quarters of an inch, but the zoning regulations regulate mean height, which is the midpoint between the peak and the eve, which is 14 feet and seven inches, or seven and eight.
All right, that's all the questions that we...
Oh, thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please raise your hand on the Zoom feature. With that, then the public portion of the hearing regarding the application is closed. Before we go to the commissioners for comment, may we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Daryl Hall's application for a variance to reduce front yard setback from 20 feet to 13 feet for an attached garage located at 10 Walnut Street, R9 Zone. And Commissioner Schoenhorn voiced concern about plumbing. Can I put some sort of stipulation there that it won't be plumbed?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, having a motion and a second, are there comments? Do you have any further comments, recognizing that you did make the motion?
Nope.
Commissioner Nadine, do you have any comment?
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Walsh?
No comment, thank you.
Any comments, Commissioner Healy?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
I would just state that I think that with the limitation on plumbing, that the applicant has established a sufficient hardship based upon the specific circumstances and unique piece of property, and that it would fit nicely within the neighborhood, it will not impact in any adverse way the neighborhood. So therefore, I support the motion as made.
I do as well, and I was encouraged by the answer to Commissioner Schoenhorn's questions about keeping those mature trees near, adjacent to the new garage structure, especially given given the comments, may we have a roll call vote, please?
We can't hear you, Commissioner Callahan.
Sorry, I turned my head away slightly because I was looking at my notes. Having had comments from the commissioners, may we now, and having closed the public portion of the hearing, may we now have a roll call vote on the motion to approve the variance application for 10 Walnut Street, subject to the provision that the structure placed pursuant to that variance not have plumbing installed in it.
All right, Chairman Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner Nadine?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Commissioner Healy?
Aye.
The motion carries, the applicant, the application is granted. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you for your time and consideration, thank you all.
All right, does anybody want a quick break before we move into the next item of the agenda? Or would you like to just press on?
I'm good.
Any preference? Okay.
Commissioner Callahan, just before we proceed into new business, I'd like to just give the board a little background on what you'd be voting on next, what the type of application, because you don't handle these applications very often.
I don't remember one ever, and I've been on the commission for a long time now.
I think we got one from Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So, the application that you're going to hear next is not a public hearing. It is a approval for location of use for a DMV license. It is a power delegated to the ZBA by state statute. It used to be planning and zoning commissions, but it has since been delegated to the ZBA. So again, it's not a public hearing, and there are no standards for the application. There used to be provisions that suitability analysis be conducted by the board in reference to schools, churches, theaters, traffic conditions, width of highway, and effect on public travel, as well as location would imperil the safety of the public. This was removed in 2003, so it's really determining if this is an appropriate location. The site was previously used as a sales and service site, so it's a similar use, it's just looking to approve a license for a new use with whatever conditions the board sees fit. So again, it is not a public hearing.
Garrett, do you have the pictures that I submitted?
Yes, yeah, I was just going over this first, and then we'll let the applicants go through, and we'll show the pictures after. So, any, any questions from the board before we proceed?
No, what's the nature, though, of our proceeding? If we're not having a public hearing?
So you just hear from the applicant? I have some, a few items to discuss based on comments that were made and revised plans. And then you would just vote to approve if you find it to be a fitting location for this use, again, it...
Vote to approve the license?
Mr. Chairman, I happen to, there's a case in this week's, or last week's appellate court decisions that talks about this. Basically, by statute, whenever a motor vehicle, used car, or auto body, or similar kind of use is being proposed, the board has the authority to decide its suitability for that location. And as Garrett just said, there used to be a statute that set forth a bunch of criteria. That was, as I understand it, repealed, and I think 2006, and never replaced with anything else. So it basically, we are acting as agents of the commissioner of motor vehicles here, and therefore, we are bound by the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act so that our decision would be based on, you know, fact, it can't be an abuse or abuse of authority, and it could go directly to the court from our findings. So it's a matter of whether it's suitable, and whether there are any conditions that we think are necessary to make it suitable based on the application. That's my understanding, if that's helpful.
That is helpful, thank you. And in that case, I believe the next step in the process would be to hear from the applicant, correct?
Correct.
May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, so my name is Kalen Stublich, I am a civil engineer at HRP Associates, here speaking on behalf of the applicant, which is Nelcon Service Center. And so the property that we are talking about is at 1149 Finderman Road. As Garrett already mentioned, there's an existing structure there, it says automotive sales and services on the outside, it's right next to Duncan and Subway. You've probably driven past this a million times, and at the five corners intersection there. So all our applicant is doing is trying to obtain a used car dealer license from the DMV, which, as Garrett mentioned, requires approval through you guys. So in terms of the site plan, it's very simple, there's an existing building. We're going to be striping some parking spaces and putting some curb stops out front, besides that, you know, the limits of pavement are going to remain as is. There's existing fencing along the perimeter of site, that's going to remain as is. All utilities will also remain as is. Things that typically come up with used car dealerships that I'll just highlight now, maybe save some questions, are, you know, where the waste goes. So the current building has an existing floor drain that connects to an existing below-grade oil-water separator that will catch any spills, be pumped out, you know, as needed, before entering the city sewer system. There's also an existing area to store waste on site, it's above-ground precast structure adjacent to the building on the northern side, just to the left of where the cursor is. And you can almost think of that as like a above-ground septic tank as well. So it's a precast structure with a baffle in the middle, you can store your waste oil drums in there, antifreeze, whatever you want to put in there, and it has a roof on top. It does have wood cladding around the outside to spruce it up a little bit right now. And that is where the spill containment was located with the previous owner as well. This garage has been out of service since around 2009. They've been trying to find, you know, a new applicant, or new occupier, since then, they just found, you know, this applicant now. The primary business of this applicant is towing. They will be storing the wreckers inside of the building, so they won't be shown, you know, from the street, the two kind of dashed areas that are there. They will, however, go for the used car dealer license in case they happen to have a wrecked car that they'd like to offload. They do need the license for that, but it's not their primary business. And if they sell, you know, maybe one car a month, that would be a good month for them, they're really not trying to sell cars, but they do need the license in order to have that ability. They think maybe maximum five cars might be on display at any one time, but more typically, there'd be two or three out front in the parking spaces, kind of in the bottom right corner. I think I hit most of what we're going for here, pretty simple site plan.
Are there any questions?
And I actually, I just realized, Sal Khan, the applicant, just joined in. Did you want to say anything additional, Sal?
There was a license there up until August of 2014. Currently, we hold eight licenses in the state, and two in North Haven, two in Meriden, two in Middletown, one in Southington, and one in Plainville. And we've been approved in Berlin. All locations are very well kept. If you drive by any, we've been operating since 2005, and I think zoning complaints out of all those locations, we've had one in North Haven, which we resolved, and the neighbor actually brings his car for service now. And we're in good standing with the DMV, and we're doing approximately, between service calls and toes, about 100 to 150 a day, so that's about our operation.
Are there any questions of the, are there any questions of the applicant? Go in the same order, Commissioner Llewellyn.
I didn't hear you, Kerry.
Do you have, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I don't have any questions of the applicant, that just seems like an awful lot of traffic coming and going at that corner. That's the only thing that would concern me. It's a great place for a repair shop, great, great place for used cars, it's been that way forever. But, you know, 100 cars coming and going out of that intersection, which is already busy, it would be a concern, that's all.
I want to just clear that up, so statewide, we do 100 to 150 tows out of all of our locations. Most of them don't come back to our locations, most of them get towed to the person's choice, a car dealership, an auto body shop, so you're not... an auto body shop, so you're not getting that traffic out of that location. And we Yep. We dispatch our trucks out in the morning, and they're out on the road during the day. They don't come back to the end of their shifts. They're not, they're not sitting there waiting for a while. They're out and working in the towns that we work with.
Okay, towing, towing's not, not an operation that I have ever been involved in, so I don't really know. It just, when she, when she said 100, I must, I must not have caught the statewide, so I have no issue with it.
Okay. Commissioner Nadeem, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Wolf?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Healy?
Yes, I, one question for the applicant. You, you said that you, you've got a similar property that was just approved in Berlin. Where in Berlin? Can you describe where that was approved?
Yep, we have it. We're approved, but we haven't moved in there yet. It's on Mill Street in Berlin, Connecticut.
Okay. I mean, I, I have a, a, just a, kind of a splinter in the back of my head, just because the, the Five Corners has changed its character so dramatically over the past five years. You know, where for a long time, it was just a gas station and service center across the street. You know, now you've got, you know, you know, food, liquor store, you've got a restaurant, Rebel Dog, you know? And it's already a very, very crazy intersection to begin with. So I mean, I have some reservations, you know, overall about just whether or not this would fit the, the changing character of Five Corners.
We're going to be the least impact on anything that could go into that location that you could put there. That's all I could tell you. There's going to be about four employees out of there, and it's not going to be a high-traffic area. Repairs are going to be very limited out of there, and it's, there's only one other tower in Farmington right now. We would be the second tower because of the restrictions of where we could go. We looked at other places. But I could tell you, as anything else that could go in there would have a much higher traffic impact. Then we're going to have four tow trucks out of there. Two heavies, a light duty wrecker, and a light duty flatbed. There's going to be very little impact on the number of people coming and going out of that facility.
So we're not, we're not liable to see one of those inflatable wacky guys flopping around on the corner there?
Never, I've never had one of those inflatable wacky guys at any of our locations there, Kerry. That, that, the reason we picked that facility is it's got a, we're going to be purchasing it. The reason we're coming in front of you is because we wanted to make sure we get approved, and we're going to be purchasing that along with the other property. The owner would not split it. So in order to make the investment, we want it to get approved first before we make a significant investment into that car. Well, we're looking to just operate our garage and leave the Dunkin' Donuts and Subway. They have, they have an existing lease for a few more years. And we're a clean operation. If you go online and see any of our properties, we have a full-time person that just does our grounds. We're very active in the communities that we service. We sponsor concerts on the green. We, we give, we had a kid on lacrosse there. His car got towed in North Haven about two weeks ago. He parked in the wrong spot. He got his car back for free. Food drives, we're very active. We own two ambulance companies. We're not your typical tow company. We employ 350 employees, so a little bit of history there. We're not, we're not your average tow company. We have over 70 trucks throughout all of our locations, and we run a very clean operation.
I appreciate your comments, and I'll, I'll shut up now and listen to the rest of my colleagues.
Commissioner Schoen, were any questions?
Yes, I have a few. Could I, I had gone and done a site check, and there are some pictures that I took. So can we look at some of those pictures from the street? Do you have those there? Okay, I'm looking at this picture here. This is the, this is the building we're talking about, correct?
Correct.
Right, and in one of the diagrams you sent us, you sent us a site plan from 1990 showing a proposed 15 or 1490 square foot building addition, which would go close to the property line. Is that not part of your plan? You're not planning on expanding it to the right there where the fencing is towards those lower bushes or, or whatever that is to the right?
No, no, that, that previously approved building addition is no longer part of the application, and we are not seeking to build any additional structure adjacent to this existing one.
And I note that because I do note that to the right, there is a home. You see the white chimney in the distance there by the pine tree to the right behind the fence. So I just want to make sure that that there's going to be no encroachment on the privacy of that property on that home there. Is that right?
You are correct, and I do believe we have a small note on our site plan that says that it is not to be constructed.
It, it's not. I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said at the end there. It's not what?
It is not to be constructed.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so I just want to ask then whether or not, if we were to approve this, my understanding is that if we make suggestions to the, to you as the applicant that are acceptable, we can make them part of the agreement for this license. And so I'm going to ask you about some of those. The first is you mentioned that at most there would be, at most, there'd be five used cars for sale. Would you agree that no more than five used cars would be available at any one time for sale on this property?
Yes, I would, I would agree to that.
On display in front.
On display. That's what I mean. It could be inside. They could be worked on, but in terms of being out in the, in the front area, we could agree then. I'm noticing even on your, on your site plan, there really are only six parking spaces, if, if you don't count the, the handicap spot. So I assume that you would be okay with it being limited to five used cars for sale at any one time that are displayed out in the front parking lot.
Commissioner Schoen? Yeah, you might be looking at the original plan. The plan was updated, and it shows nine spaces plus a handicap space.
One, two, three, four.
I received updated plans Friday night, so I upload them for sure Friday morning, so that's
You're right. I'm looking at the one that shows, looks like maybe six parking spaces. You're saying there are there are nine?
I believe there are nine total, including the ADA space.
All right, so, but you have no objection that of those nine, no more than five would constitute the used cars?
Correct.
Okay, and, and as far as the towing operation, does the company tow for illegal parking? So would it be bringing cars from someone who overstayed their parking or parked in a private lot, and then they would have to come retrieve their car maybe after hours and whatnot? Would that be part of the operation here at, at Fineman Road?
At none of our locations do we patrol and do private property towing. It gives you bad reviews. That's not the reputation our family business wants. So we do not do private property patrolling and taking people's cars at any, any one of our locations.
Okay, and in the plan, it also says that the wreckers will be stored, will be stored inside. Would you agree to make that a a condition that when not in operation, the wreckers themselves will not be stored in the front area? They'll be stored either inside the building or behind the building?
Sometimes there's fatality calls for the state police, and we have to split trucks and cars inside until the, and, and bring in a mechanic the next day or the day after for investigation. We don't want our trucks sitting outside. They're very expensive trucks. But sometimes those trucks do have to stay outside if we get a two-car accident with, with investigation. We're going to have to put those vehicles in the garage. But the trucks we have are far from a nicer, and we don't want them sitting outside. We, we want them inside. But there is times that we have to leave them out for a multiple car accident and for either local Farmington police or for two-day state police up on Interstate 84.
Well, my, my concern would be that the trucks aren't out there advertising with, you know, especially large wrecker just being like a movable billboard for the company that, that the, that the trucks themselves are not to be parked there on a regular basis. I assume that if there were exceptions such as except as required based on emergency circumstances, that they would not be regularly stored or parked in the, in the front of the structure when it, when not in use. Is that a fair agreement that you would agree to?
I am very honest, and during the day, when they pull these trucks out during daytime operation, unless it's winter time with cold weather, put them inside and pull them out every time there's a call. And a lot of times, they won't even be there. They'll be on walls, and we, we use tow stations, much like our ambulance company when, when they're at a downtime.
But, but are you agreeing then that, I know you're telling me that you just can't, you know, you don't generally do that, but would you agree to that as a condition?
I, I don't see why you wouldn't let me park them outside the front of the building. I have other garage in Connecticut. People park their trucks outside their garage. I don't want to be restricted. I can tell you at nighttime, they'll be inside unless we have fatality cars, but not be able to park your vehicles in front of your garage. That's, that's like a restraint of trade. I don't understand why you wouldn't, why we can't park our trucks outside our, front of our bay doors. We're worried about our marketing. We want people to know we're in town. There's been one company there for years. There should be no restriction on, Garrett, I'm going to put you on the spot. You worked with me in Plainville. What do we do to that location, and what do we do with the fire departments for training? I'd like Garrett to speak though.
Well, I think it's up to the chairman as to whether or not, you know, he's going to have the
I agree. I don't think it's appropriate to have the applicant call on the town staff to talk about what went on in a different
Asking me to put it, to keep our trucks inside whenever we're not using them during the day. There should be no reason they can't be out on the front path if they're there.
Well, let, let me just say that the Planning and Zoning Commission has been very strict about that. Become sort of advertising that's larger than the signs that are permitted without a special approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So what I'm asking is that whether you park them inside or you park them to the right, to the side of the building, whether or not you would agree that they are not to be parked as a general rule in the front of the building, acting as sort of signage, which is, I suggest, something that the town has strict rules about. So I'm asking whether that's something you would agree to?
I don't, I don't have a problem parking them off to the side. Most of the time when they're put away for the day, they're going to be put in the garage. So I don't have a problem if you want them parked off to the side.
All right, and finally, I think this was Commissioner Healy who had asked that question. Would you object to a condition that there will not be any flags or inflatable signage or inflatable characters advertising this location at this busy intersection where there's a lot of traffic?
No problem, 100%. You could put that as a restriction in there if you want.
Right, that's all the
That would be governed by the zoning regulations. We don't allow them in the zoning, we don't allow those in the zoning regulations, so that would be governed by the zoning regulations.
Okay, all right. I have no further questions.
I don't have any further questions.
Aaron, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
We've heard from the applicant. Is there anyone else who wishes, I'm doing this in the format of a public hearing, although it's not really
Yeah, Chairman Callan, I just have a couple of comments based on staff's review of the plan.
Who's that, Garrett?
Yes, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I believe I submitted the comments to the board with your agenda review. We did receive a response and some updated plans. One being, they had shown a structure for waste or oil storage, but there was an existing structure on the side. On the original plans, there's one here. They're going to continue to use this. It's covered. So that's fine. There's a grease separator right here. So any drainage from the building will go through the grease separator first, and it won't go into the town system. There's an area proposed here, which was shown on the original site plan from 1990. This is, staff is requesting that the board put a condition of approval that all towed vehicles are to be stored in this area, and that the area be paved approved to be, and be approved by town staff. We wouldn't necessarily have to hold up. We just have, the staff has concerns about runoff and leaking from any vehicles that might be sitting there as all this water drains to the, the Farmington River, which is an impaired waterway at times. So just asking that it be paved. The again, using the existing storage had come to a properly line. Per the response to the comments, ours would be 9:00 to 4:00, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. No more than five vehicles, as Commissioner Schonhorn established with the applicant. There's no history of contamination on the site. There's a monitoring well for the former gas station that's next door, which is where the Dunkin' Donuts and Subway is. I think it used to be a whole donut a long time ago. Made a comment about signs. We'll have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for that, as well as lighting. And then we just requested a spill prevention and control plan, which staff has reviewed. And all the, and all changes that staff requests have been made. So just to clarify, just putting the conditions. And if any commissioners have any questions on these, ours, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Limited of five sale vehicles, all towed vehicles stored behind the fence. Storage to be paved and approved by town staff. I believe the consensus with the applicant was that the wreckers would be stored
Could we discuss the, the line item about paving the existing gravel area? Is this the platform to do that, or?
Uh, hang on one second, Caitlin. Let me just finish this. And that the wreckers are to be stored alongside the building or inside, not along the road. Go ahead, Caitlin. We can have some discussion on that.
Okay, yes. So the town did originally request for the gravel limits as indicated on the northern side of the building to be paved as a spill spill containment device. Upon further discussion with the applicant, this actually may be a non-issue as most accidents have spill response on site, and any leaking apparatus out of a vehicle would need to be cleaned on the accident site. It would not be towed back to this location in that state. So there would be a very low likelihood that there'd even be any fluids present, present in a towed vehicle. Secondly, when you pave an area that you may or may not be moving damaged vehicles on, if there's no wheels or there's bumpers hanging or X, Y, and Z hanging off of the, the vehicle, it will actually damage the pavement a lot quicker than a typical pavement scenario, and it's going to actually cause a lot of issues with their operations. Whereas if there's gravel in the back, you can kind of drag cars over it and not have any detriment to the material. It just kind of re, restructures itself as needed if you have cars, you know, dragging across it. Therefore, the applicant is motioning to not pave the back and leave it as existing gravel. If for whatever reason there happens to be a leak detected, they would bring that vehicle into the garage where we do have the existing floor drain location, address the leak, make sure nothing's happening before returning it to the yard. So we would like that to not be a condition of approval.
Can I just say something, Garrett?
Yep.
When these cars get into an accident, the ambulances are called, then patients are taken away, then we're called. When radiators are broken or oil pans are broken, and if it's anything substantial, the fire department's on scene. By the time we either pick it up on a wrecker or load it on a angle on a flatbed, all these fluids are out of these vehicles way before they get back to our shop. If there is a vehicle that's leaking on our deck still, like we have, we tried paving out of our Meriden base on half of the location. The pavement didn't last. It just gets wrecked and torn up over time. I will do whatever the board wants. I don't have a problem. It's not an issue of spending the money for, for pavement, but I could tell you, it just doesn't hold up well. But I can tell you, it just doesn't hold up well. And you have in your mind that these cars are leaking when they come back there. By the time that vehicle gets back to our yard, the fluids are out of the vehicle. And we're not going to want to contaminate our own property. All of our sites are clean. Well contaminated sites went through the process of cleaning them up. The last thing we want, we, we, we have spill ponds. Where the bigger, even the bigger truck accidents, those are all environmental companies are pulled out nowadays. Tanks are pumped. There is. It's not the world of yesteryears where these vehicles were able to get towed away when they had uh, fuel or anything leaking.
Um, Commissioner Callahan, uh, I do have another member of staff Bruce here on. So, oh, I didn't speak.
Go ahead. I see that Bruce here is, has joined us and he has his hand up.
Good evening Chair. Uh, just wanted to elaborate a little bit on that comment we had with regards to the leaks. I do have a lot of knowledge in terms of sites like this and whatever leak it is, yes, you do lose a lot of the leak at the scene. But yet there is still a small amount of uh, fluids that will drip out of it over time. And, and you're talking about us, one vehicle may not be the problem, but it's multiple vehicles over multiple days, over multiple years. Uh, there's already been a history of some contamination on that site. So. Uh, this whole area is surrounded by mostly residential down, downstream and there's. Catch basins right by the edge of Fineman. So whatever comes off the site is going to roll right down the driveway, right into a. Catch basin. Those pipes run through residential uh, neighborhoods, backyards, through easements, through open uh, catch basins, manholes. And those did discharge right into the wetland uh, alongside eighty-four. It crosses over eighty-four. Flows into the larger dead swamp area and then heads over to a Patterson Park. So that's kind of what the concern that we have. And I understand what the applicant is saying. I just want them, I just want everyone to understand where we are uh, coming from on this.
In one clarification from what uh, Mr. Seer just said, there's no known chemi- contamination on this parcel. Uh, there was some cleanup done on the abutting parcel to the north.
All right, thank you.
Just one, one clarification.
Yeah, exactly. And I know that they, they have been testing wells. There's some monitoring wells out there, but that's our biggest concern. I, and. I have no, once this is done, um, uh, once this is done, we have no avenue to go back after them. So that's why we're very uh. Concerned in making sure that we get this right. The first time, we don't want to end up with a site that has. Ten, fifteen vehicles or whatever inside that compound area leaking. Over time and then you go in there and you'll see staining all over the place and it's either going to run off the site or it's going to get into the ground, into the groundwater. So that's where our, our concern is, is from.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Mr. Seer?
Of course.
Um, if we could, there, there's one of the pictures that I took shows the left side of the building, you know, it's uh, shows the wooden fence between. Now the other side of the building.
Yeah, I think I might have a better picture John, hold on.
Yeah, there's one that just shows the left side. Yeah, that one there. Um, it looks like whatever gravel might have been there. Obviously I couldn't go back there because of the uh. Of the fencing, but the building we see in the, to the rear, that's the restaurant that um. I forget what it's called now. That's the.
Five Corners.
Yes. And um, so you're talking about parking the wrecked vehicles in the area. Just between, just uh, past where I see some grass and I see what appears to be some gravel that's been. Overgrown with grass. Is that the area we're talking about? Are we talking about an area even further behind the building that's not really visible?
It's kind of a combination of both. Yeah.
Right. I think for, for Mr. Seer's purposes, what, what area were you concerned about for purposes of. The possible groundwater contamination from even small leaks?
Well, I am, I am concerned with the whole site. That's number one, but the main thing is with it being on the gravel, I just don't want that getting in. Into the ground uh, uh, and getting into the groundwater system. Cause I, as you can see that everything runs, everything runs uh, north, north to south. It all pitches down towards all those uh, residential homes. It runs through the Bonnie Drive, Shell, Shell Drive uh, neighborhood. Through again, the big thing is it runs through backyards. There's open uh, catch basins in those yards. So just concerned with any kind of a contamination over time that would flow through there into the wetlands and then into the Patterson Park pond.
And what, if, if we're looking at this, this um, plot here, what, would you just show what area you would believe should be paved? In other words. You know, there was an area that was marked off as gravel on the site plan that was presented, but. Are you talking about paving just that area or a particular percentage of that lot of that?
Nope. I was talking about maintaining the existing plan, the existing approved plan and just, and just converting the processed. Area or, or the, or the gravel area over to uh, over to the bituminous pavement.
And would that be flat or would there have to be some kind of drainage to ca- catch basin installed? So that if there was any leakage onto the, onto the asphalt, it would only go in a certain direction and therefore stay away from either the swale. Or any of the catch basins that are flow into the uh, marshes, the wetlands.
The gravel is, the gravel's just worse because it gets right. It goes, it just goes right into the groundwater, but by two minutes at least holds it on the surface. And it's easier to maintain. It's easier to uh, uh, clean up if there is a spill. Once it's on the gravel, there's no way to really uh, clean that up. You know, you'd have to actually dig it up and get, and then, and then just get rid of the soil. That's the only way you can clean that up.
I understand. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm muted due to the cloth that's been hanging around since COVID. Um, are there any, I don't have any further questions other than those that have been asked. Yes, who just spoke up?
John.
I thought that was your voice.
For the second time, thank you uh, again to the applicant. Um, just, just doing a cursory search of, of the business um, online. It looks like a good portion of your business uh, includes um, you know, large scale recovery. Uh, so you know, towing tractor trailers and. Uh, you know, something larger than just a typical two axle recovery. Uh, is that uh, you know, so when you talk about having those large kind of tractor trailer style. Wreckers, uh, are those the type of vehicles that will be stationed and deployed in and out of this facility as opposed to kind of the standard, you know?
There'd be two heavy duties, a light duty flatbed and a light duty wrecker there. The state, the, the state requires us to have um, wreckers for each location that we uh, service for a town in the true page.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to follow up with you. When we tow those trucks. For breakdowns, they don't, we don't, we have a truck repair shop in North Haven, Connecticut. But those don't come to my satellites unless there's a, unless we have a wreck or a fatality. Then they, they would come back to that location, but trucks don't stay at our uh, satellite locations.
All right. And I did have a comment or a question. If you could pull up please the picture showing the front of the facility. That's fine. It looks like there's one bay door. Is there sufficient space inside the building? And I understand your concern. That you, it would be difficult to commit to never having one of the wreckers parked out in front. As opposed to inside. But is there adequate space for all four of the tow vehicles? Inside via that one garage bay door?
The building is on clear stand inside. So there's no, there's no um, beams in the way. And there is a side door, another garage door that enters from the side.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Are there any further questions from members of the commission?
Can I add one more comment?
Yes.
Um, if the board has a concern about the paving, we will, we will pave. We are. We're, we're a spill tackle dealer for Connecticut. That's the absorbent material. We are, we are, we push to get uh. That on the, all the trucks in Connecticut. That um, we service in the town. So we donate the same product to the fire department. So we are very environmentally conscious. Um, half the locations we own and um. Some of them have monitoring wells. We bought contaminated properties and had them cleaned. So we are very conscious of keeping properties not contaminated.
Having heard from the applicant, having heard questions and comments from the commissioners, is there anyone present who wishes to speak? In opposition to the application? And also, I'm sorry, having heard from staff as well.
It's not a public hearing.
I know, I understand it's not a public hearing, but I'm just trying to make sure that everybody gets their chance to speak and it's, I guess my question is. Being somewhat unfamiliar with this type of issue on our agenda. Is the next step a motion?
Correct. Yes, if.
And that would be a motion. It would be a motion for recommendation of suitability to the commissioner of motor vehicles to issue.
And that would be a recommendation for suitability to the commissioner of motor vehicles, subject to the conditions. That we've discussed here this evening, I trust.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, if then one of the members of the commission is prepared to make that motion, please do so.
I will make that motion and I'm going to add, I'm going to recommend, I'm going to make the motion that the board approve. A um, um, recommendation of suitability of the application of Maple Avenue Repair Service LLC. Doing business as Milken Service Center to operate a used car dealer license um. Uh, for used car uh, property located at one, one, four, nine Fineman Road. Uh, with the following um, conditions. The first being that the uh, facility will be. Open for used car sales between the hours of nine and four PM, Monday through Friday. That there will not be more than a maximum of five used cars for sale at any one time that are. That are out in the front of the building. That the um, wreckers. That are uh, assigned to this location will be stored. And parked either inside the building or to the sides of the building so that they are not uh, in the parking area. Um, in front of the forward um, frontline of that structure. That the area on the plan that's marked as gravel area to be for use for wrecked vehicles. Be paved with a suitable bituminous or other uh, material that will prevent. Uh, drainage and seepage into the um, ground and therefore end up in the. Uh, in any of the, the, the water table. I think, I don't know if there was another condition that we talked about. Those are the ones I wrote down, but if there's another one, that, that would be my motion.
And I would just note that as part of your motion, you indicated that after your motion to prove the suitability. I think you said that nine PM to four PM.
I'm sorry, nine AM.
Nine AM.
I'm sorry.
May we have a second please? I'll, I'll second the motion. I believe we've already heard comments and questions from the commissioners. Therefore, I. Will entertain procedural discussion, but I believe the next step in the process would be to. Take a vote by calling the roll as we have done uh, throughout the course of this evening's meeting.
Correct. Would you like me to take the roll?
Yes, please.
Chairman Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowell.
And App State.
Commissioner Nadeem?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Commissioner Healy?
Before I vote, can I ask for clarification with this motion? Does it require uh, you know, more than a simple majority for it to pass? Does it require a quorum of four yeses?
Yes, all ZBA actions require four affirmative votes.
I'm a no.
All right, there is a four affirmative votes, one nay, one abstention.
So the motion carries.
Correct.
Good, okay. Okay, I believe that concludes that agenda item.
Correct.
Okay, okay. To the applicant, good luck. I hope the business venture is a success.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We won't let you down.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Find the next item?
The next item would be Commissioner Schoenhorn's baby. The bylaw amendments.
We have the proposals that were, yeah. So last time, I'll just say that uh. We only had a minimum quorum of four people. So an agreement was made that we would move it to the next meeting. We can't vote on these. Until um, the July meeting according to our current bylaws. I proposed these um, three changes. More or less to make the, the process simpler. And easier and more user friendly, not only for staff, but for those who wish to make uh, presentations. The issue about whether we're having an online or a in-person meeting. Only matters if somebody wants to attend remotely and can't attend and we don't have a process for that. In fact. Our current bylaws specifically say a person must approach the table and speak. We don't even have a table for those who have. Actually sat in on our meetings when we've been in person. There's a podium where they go to. So. The proposal was that in order to maintain a sufficient notice to the public, whether a meeting is going to be in person. Or online or hybrid, where some of us are in person, some of the, some of us are remote. That um, anyone who wished to speak remotely, if a meeting was going to be in person, has to give sufficient notice to town staff. To make sure we have the appropriate um, Zoom ability so that they can attend and it's not a last minute. Kind of thing. So the language we approached, I, I had proposed was discussed with um, the. Mr. Di Crescendo, the uh, land use attorney for the uh, for the town, Bob Di Crescendo. And there were some suggestions originally. Uh, the question was whether forty-eight hours was enough time because two business days. The notice has to be uh, forty-eight hours so that a person has to give notice maybe sooner than forty-eight hours. So the proposal as submitted, I would, I'd suggest needs to be changed to seventy-two hours to give notice. So that there's sufficient time to make sure that we meet with state statute. Again, these are our bylaws in terms of how we're going to conduct our meetings. And we don't know what it's going to be like in the future. We don't know if there's going to be um, a constant. Problem with, with a pandemic every year or every two years. So it's basically to bring our, our bylaws. Up to date so we can deal with remote hearings. So it's basically to bring our, our bylaws up to date so we can deal with remote hearings. Um, that was the, that's basically the purpose of both, um, uh, nine and ten. Uh, that is section five and section six, the amendments. The final one, um, which is section ten, um, was a, was just a proposal. I see that we now have more photographs being submitted. But, um, the idea of having photographs being submitted with a proposal is just something that I think, um, we all can agree makes it a lot easier to understand. Not all of us can get out to do a site inspection, although I try to make a point of doing it, but sometimes I can't make it. Therefore, being able to see what the property and maybe the neighboring property looks like is very helpful. I think even looking at those pictures from the golf course, for example, were very helpful, um, in terms of what it looked like now. So those are the proposals. Um, it's open for some discussion now whether, and we would vote on it in July, but you know, any, this was the proposals. And like I said, the only change that was suggested was in section five, instead of it being, giving notice two business days. Uh, the, the, um, town attorney said it should be at least three to give town, uh, the town staff enough time to change the official notes. Those are my proposals.
Sorry, I was muted, that makes sense. I have no problem continuing the access of the public to the meetings via Zoom.
So, uh, just so the board is aware, um, this happened in between the last meeting and this meeting. Um, the state legislature removed the sunset date of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two on the, uh, enabling law that allowed remote meeting, remote meetings through the pandemic. Um, so now they are allowed indefinitely, um, by the state. So we're allowed to hold hybrid meetings and public meeting, in-person meetings or completely virtual meetings, um, indefinitely. Um, in the legislation, there's a requirement that any meeting that is being held in person, if it is switched to another format, um, revised agenda needs to be posted forty-eight hours ahead of time as opposed to the normal twenty-four hours. Um, it raises a question about your public hearings, um, but there was not identified in the state legislature. So until a case law comes out about, uh, the change in notice to public hearings, um, that forty-eight hours will stand. Uh, at least for the time being, it looks like we're going to continue doing our virtual meetings. In Christian Schoenhorn's proposal, um, it required, he originally proposed that it require, uh, anyone that wished to address the board would give notice two days beforehand. Um, and that the chairman may decline a remote speaker who fails to give the requisite two days' notice. Um, our town attorney did review this, um, and it was not in, uh, compliance with the law or the F O I. Um, same thing with the proposal in article ten, section six. It says if an individual has provided proper notice to appear remotely, the person shall announce their presence at the appropriate time by unmuting the microphone function or otherwise provide notice to staff if they desire to speak. Um, that's more of a, I want to say a cultural thing, but, but it's a procedural thing is that, um, we know how people get elected to speak on Zoom by raising their hand. Um, as far as you know, this is the program we're going to be using. Um, if we end up having to switch to a different program, it would just be the same procedure. Uh, and then lastly, uh, Christian Horn's proposal to require photos as part of submission of an application in the bylaws. Um, this, the bylaws are what regulate the board and your conduct of meetings. It doesn't regulate the applications. Um, if the commission, if the board wants to have their, uh, application revised to require, uh, photos and that a lack of photos would constitute an incomplete application, uh, there just had to be consensus from the board to do so and staff would revise the application. Um, that's all that's required for that. Um, I did provide, uh, Christian Schorn's proposed amendments as well as the, uh, review from our town attorney. There was two separate emails, one dated April thirteenth and one dated April fifteenth, um, from the same week. Because it was, it, uh, was, uh, just before the, uh, the last meeting, uh, you know, April. So as Chris Schonhardt said, you can't vote on any of these until July as stated in the bylaws. Um, so just something to think over in the next month. The commissioners, have any comments, questions?
Eric, would we have to wait until July, uh, to, if we were to change the application policy, uh?
No, no, that would just be a consensus of the, of the board that you would like photos as part of the submittal. And what we just add a checkbox to the application that says, did you submit photos of the site? And if they didn't, then it would be an incomplete application and we wouldn't accept it.
Man, I, I don't know that we want to go that far.
Well, see, that's why we're having the discussion, if you'll notice.
Yeah, but.
What I put in the proposals that they're advised to submit them and didn't say it was mandatory, so.
That's what I'm hearing, is that it's, it's a good idea and photographs are helpful. But I'm, I don't think we should go as far as if you don't submit photos in support of your application, we're going to reject it or we won't consider it.
That's fine, it's, it's just what, with whoever the board wants their application to add, um, to have, really.
Could, could we not just add a sentence that said that applicants are advised for, to, for us, to assist the board to submit photographs of the area in question? Or something of just, rather than making it a mandatory.
Yeah, or change it, or change advise to encourage.
Yeah, we could, we could just, if, if, if it's the board's consensus, um, we can amend the, uh, application, uh, to say, um, and there's, on the application, there's a front page that asks for all the requisite applicant information, abutters and things like that. And then there's a backside that details, um, the due date, uh, application fee. Um, and we can just add a sentence that said it is recommended to submit, uh, photos of the proposed site and surrounding area in addition to, uh, any available surveys or site plans of the property and any proposed, any, um, renderings or sketches of the proposed elevations of the, of any, uh, variance. I, I can work on the wording, but you wouldn't have to vote on the, the wording. It would just be a consensus that that's what you would like to be added. It's just a recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Llewellyn, your hand is raised.
Yeah, um, I know, John, you, Commissioner Schoenhorn, you, uh, tend to go out and visit the sites. I've visited some sites today. Um, pictures in themselves don't really tell the real story, like the size of some of these lots. I completely agree with pictures, but to what extent do we want pictures? Like how many pictures is, is good enough? You know, do we give them some kind of like incentive for, you know, the photographs will help us to visualize the project? You know what I mean? That's kind of what I'm thinking.
I agree a hundred percent with what you, what you're saying. I just feel that when there's no images, that we're at a disadvantage if we were unable to go to the site. That's, so some pictures are better than none, and I agree, they may not tell the whole story. But if you're encouraging people to submit pictures, but they submit two or five, you know, I mean, maybe ten is too many. But I'm just, what, what I'm trying to do is, and, and I, and I understand that a couple of other commissioners have mentioned to me that, you know, they liked it, they appreciated that I took my own pictures when there weren't any available for that particular, uh, application. It, it helps me visualize, you know, I'm better at visualizing from a picture than I am from a site plan, to be honest.
I, I completely agree with you. I'm, I'm in favor of supporting the, the pictures, however you want to do it.
Anyone opposed to amending the application to just add that sentence? I'll, I'll work on the wording and I can run it by everyone next month if we have a meeting. I believe we'll have a meeting, but. No objections to the, no comments to this, okay? So, well, I will amend the application and I'll just run it by the, uh, board at your next meeting. Um, if you like the wording or not. And we can talk more about the bylaws at the April meeting, if we, uh, April meeting, July meeting, if we have one.
All right, is there any further business on tonight's agenda or are we ready for a motion to adjourn?
Uh, the minutes.
Just the minutes.
Oh, the minutes, you're right. Uh, may I have a motion regarding the approval of the minutes of the April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two Z B A meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Any comments, questions or opposition? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't present at the meeting.
Understood, thank you.
Thanks.
I believe a motion to adjourn would now be appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you everyone for attending.
Thank you everyone, have a nice night.